Welcome to the Policy and Resources Committee. And without any apologies.
Councilor Gellard.
Thank you. First appointment is to the appointment of the Chair. Can we have nominations first? Nominate Elsa Graham. Any other nominations? Okay, Councilor Graham.
I beg you, before I go any further, can I ask for a more precise response from Councilor Gellard to this statement. Right, thank you. I thought we knew the question.
And nominate Councilor Hare.
Good and seconded. Councilor ahead. Any other nominations? And before that, permission of interest? Then Councilor Graham.
Yeah, I'd say six, six I.
Six I. Any other?
Yes. And five with ox clothes.
Okay. Councilor Graham, and five with ox clothes.
Right. I have five public questions. We have two tonight. The first one is, Mr. Gellard, do you wish to speak?
I do, Chair. Thank you very much. I do have a supplementary and it is directly linked to the original question. The question is, at the AGM on the 26th of May 2015, Councilor Gellard made the statement, certainly one of the biggest ways in which town councils can have an effect on their localities is through neighbourhood planning. And as such, we will again investigate the merits of creating a neighbourhood plan for Spennymore. There was a cabinet report on the 6th of April 2016, which states in paragraph nine, as listed there on the agenda, and as a result, I come to the conclusion that DCC see more interested in the money than in the position of maintaining a balance within the county. My question is, what measures has SDC taken since May 2015 to revisit the position? And will SDC be putting in place a neighbourhood plan to protect the township from over-residential development? And be making strong representation that money received from homes built in the township will be spent on infrastructure projects in the area? Thank you.
Can I begin by thanking Mr. Gellard for his question? Following the statement by the Leader of the Council to which Mr. Gellard refers, the Council accepted the proposal in June 2015 to add the following name to the Council Vision document proposed by Councilor Graham, but the Council, Councilor Gellard, do apologize. This was to investigate the feasibility and the benefits of creating a neighbourhood plan for Spennymore. And if the Council believe these benefits would be worthwhile, prepare a neighbourhood plan. The Councils have therefore already committed to investigate the possibility of preparing a neighbourhood plan. At the annual meeting last month, it was noted that the Labour of the Council committed that in this specific year, the Council will ensure that the last building blocks of the Council Vision come together. Given that the county Durham Plan is to be revisited and consultation around this issue will be soon commenced, it will shortly be recommended to Council that consultation exercise is initiated to invite comments from local residents and others, which along with consideration of other issues such as time and resources, will form the basis for the Council to determine its views on regressing with the creation of a neighbourhood plan.
So, it will be mentioned here? For consultation?
Yeah. Okay, consultation.
Okay. Councilor Graham.
First Chair, I would like to move the Council... Sorry. Mr. Gellard's question goes back to the Council. The next policy and resource is on the basis that I would like to have a formal update from the Council as to where our position was they in bringing forward the neighbourhood plan. We did discuss about the audit meeting. It is an important issue. And I don't think that we should have an early meeting of the Council to discuss this. That's all.
Well, we... Yes, well, I'm not going to accept that in what the Council understood because the officer has said that he would come back with that information as soon as he could. Sooner than better. Okay?
Chair, just to pull back on that. You know, it is a thorough... Yes, yes, I understand that. Yes, okay.
Okay. Right, subsequent question, Mr. Gellard.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think many agree that a neighbourhood plan can be immensely beneficial to the local area in directing short, medium and long term aspirations for the area. Government guidance document says neighbourhood planning can inspire local people and businesses to consider other ways to improve their neighbourhood than through the development and use of land. We're not here to address the rights of citizens or the political thinking behind the localism plan, but what I will say in this chamber over the last few years, that it's been concerned with short-minded politicking, essentially making reactionary decisions benefiting the few rather than the whole of the community in the township, in my opinion. The community has over recent years lost out on an estimated millions of pounds of government funding which has gone straight to Durham County Council and not to Spennymore. Durham County Councilers in this chamber have endorsed regeneration, which has been spent on roundabout school extensions and town centre public relations. In my opinion, this is not regeneration. This is unnecessary public spending which is using regeneration as a smokescreen. The best we now see in 2016 is £600,000, of which £500,000 was made available in 2013. And basically, it's for a new car park. The town, in my opinion, does not need someone to be visionary. We can all talk and we can all have dreams. In the words of Napoleon Bonaparte, the amateurs talk tactics, professionals talk logistics. I wish to ask this Council, will this Council consider with the utmost urgency and in light of there being no county plan to take to committee and discuss? Number one, the urgent employment of persons on the Council to fill the post that the Council has had made vacant for a considerable length of time. And number two, the employment of a neighbourhood development officer who in consultation with our communities can bring forward a neighbourhood plan that can realistically be adopted by the Council in a socially, economically and environmentally sustainable format for the greater good of the people in Spennymore for the short, medium and long term future. Thank you, Chair.
Right, Mr. Gellard. I'm looking for your comments. Okay. Currently, we wouldn't be going on consultation on the neighbourhood plan. Yes?
Yeah. I mean, through you, Chair, as I said, the intention is to consult with the community and the public. But we do need to consider things such as time and resources as well to make sure that that can take place.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Second question then. I don't want to name you until I tell you that you're on... That you're on video. Okay?
Yes.
And the person to the right of you is also recording the meeting. We have no control where he puts that recording. Okay?
That's fine.
That's good. So, I can mention my name?
Absolutely.
Okay. Right. Okay. You want to speak?
I'll ask my question. Yes, thank you, Chair. So, I am asking a question a few minutes ago now. And it's in relation to parking on Oxclose, as we know. Very fastly, road traffic congestion problems have existed for some time on Oxclose Crescent during the morning drop off and afternoon pickup at Oxclose Primary School, which have raised concerns for local residents for some time now. I know Spennymore town council own the land, known as the Deane, and in particular, the area at the bottom of Merfey with Weyrall adjacent to the road junction with Car Lane. Are Spennymore town council willing to lease or sell, renowned as the Sun, that area of the Deane to be able to provide a turn and circle and/or upper floor parking area? This area could be used by residents of Oxclose Crescent on evenings and on weekends. This request would greatly benefit residents during the busy weekday school traffic congestion periods too. Do you have a supplementary question as well?
Yeah. Through you, Chair. Again, can I begin by thanking Mr. Gibson for his question? The Council have recently been contacted by their chief of local primary school around this issue as well. And as such, as the Council's facilities manager perform investigation into relevant issues such as around cost, highway consideration and the change of use of land, I'll be providing the Council with an initial and an initial feasibility report and propose consultation exercise that the Council do determine in due course.
Okay, Liam.
Yeah, I just wanted to also point out that, you know, the school was built in 1969, which was 47 years ago. And nothing's been done to address parking in that time. So, something does need to be done.
Right. Okay. Councilor Johnson?
Chair, I'd like to know that that comes back to the Policy and Resource Committee very soon. Things are kind of serious a little bit down there with the parking. It's having an effect on the residents of that area. So, I'd like to bring it back to the Policy Committee within the next two months, please.
Well, Councilor... Councilor Johnson, there has been a responsibility since the manager and he would bring it back to the committee rather sooner. But I don't want to put too much pressure on the facilities manager's score temporary talent. So, I would really like to bring it back.
Thank you, Chair. And then, Mr. Graham.
Okay. Right, item six, financial assistance. This is an update on the proposed colour rule. Section 137, grant. Pass for £2,000.
Should I take it, Mr. Chair? Yes, for the... For my report. Just the update on the proposed colour run. The purpose of the report is to provide members the details of the proposed colour run event to be organised by the youth council. Members have previously given approval to the youth council for the colour run in Jubilee Park, whilst also requesting that they come back to council on how the event will be managed and delivered. The current position is, after a number of meetings with relevant stakeholders, the youth council have decided on the following. Receive approval from the council that the event venue could change from Jubilee Park to Hydrocomp Plainfield. That the event date be the Sunday the 10th of July 2016. That the engagement standard events to manage and deliver the event on their behalf. That the maximum number running in the event be capped at 750 people. And that the entrance to run is free for under eight and would be free of charge. Would be... For under eight would be free of charge and £10 for... £10 charge would be made for all of the runners. And that the sale of them tickets or the sale of being able to run the event would take place prior to the event date. Recommend it's before that members know the decision of the youth council and has identified an sexual grievance report and agreed to the use of Hydrocomp Plainfield for the event on the 10th of July.
Thank you, Chair. And I would be happy to accept the recommendation of the report and that we through the application developed a section on this.
And move second. You bring... Will you have it? Right, Liam. Thank you. I do... Item seven, Councilor Graham.
Move, Chair.
Is it seven? Do you copy? Item seven, the Council authorise. Councilor Graham.
Mr. Graham, on page four, please. Man, there we go. Words by Tim Helman, page 16. So, the 564. I thought this time we were finished with this. So, it's out of the book. Is this the boundary of this rule?
Through you, Chair. Mr. Cameron's completed the organisational review. However, there's still outstanding work that needs to be completed around the employment contracts for all of the employees, around provision of data to the employees, around schooling mechanism for the job evaluation processes as well.
So, who's organised the paperwork?
It was part of the... Part of the organisational...
Part of the organisation.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Item seven. Right. Item eight. Put you during control. Flip.
Thanks for the evening, Councilor Graham. This is the first month of the new year, so please don't be too late to have any meaningful comments made on it. I have adopted a new format, which I've invited comments from the members that are happy with it or they want me to change it to get or anyway colour code it or do any notes.
Just so, Chair.
I thought I'd bring to you...
So, just considered to now. I have no comments.
Right. Right, Councilor Graham.
I wonder if I could ask for the report to... Or one side. Because the very small print is extremely difficult to...
I could change the size of the print by... And you could roll into the appendix the index to have a little better on your ones where you have the balance lines, I believe. Okay? Have you done that?
Yes.
With the... And this, Mr. Graham.
And move, Mr. Graham. Will you have it? Yep. Item nine, I'll go around speed limits later.
Thank you, Chair. This was referred from the last meeting of this committee, a public question on this matter. And we were asked to consider the support of the lobbying and implementation of 29 hour speed limits on all the non-attainable roads in the township. And I might have known motion in that recap today. And we know, as a majority group, don't believe that 29 hours is supposed to be for all non-attainable roads. And we do support the pack time 29 hour speed limits. And the big answer is, well, from head to toe, my motion is as follows. That this council, number one, do not support the implementation of 29 hour speed limits on all non-attainable roads in Spennymore. Two, note the success of phase one of the pack time 29 hour speed limit scheme by Durham County Council and look on the proposed implementation of the scheme at King Street and Road Street Primary School in phase two. And three, welcome the news that the county council are proposing to extend the scheme to an additional 33 schools across the county in a further term phases. Four, right to the county council to support the implementation of pack time 29 hour speed limits across all schools in the Spennymore Town Council area. And number five, follow confirmation of the additional schools for implementation. Lobby for the possible extension of the scheme to any remaining schools in the Spennymore area. Explore the potential for additional funding that can be provided from the town council should funding be otherwise unavailable.
Right. Second motion. Move, Mr. Graham.
Yes, Chair. It's nice to know that Councilor Gellard had a great one with regards to this. I did put a motion into the council some time back. It was myself who put the request forward for Mr. Gellard's question to come back to committee. On the motion that I put into the council, and I did say, could we extend it to all schools in the Spennymore area? Could the council provide funding? Could we work closely with the Durham County Council highways? And referred members also to the documentation of the 11th of May that appears on the Durham County Council website, which gives more information if you got to this. However, additional to my motion, what I was asking is, could this be implemented in 2016? Which that date hasn't actually been offered by Councilor Gellard. And therefore, I would have an amendment to this motion, but agreeing principle. But it's a very good idea. Thank you.
Move, Mr. Graham. Councilor Graham.
If I could speak on the amendment. I can support the amendment because the land isn't budget provision in this year's budgets for such a scheme. We also don't currently know which new schools will be picked by the county council for 33 in the next phase and they can get to us. And so, we need to understand first how many schools will not be in the scheme and whether or not there's a cost benefit to doing that. So, there's a lot to consider. And I don't think setting the... Setting it for this budget year is this reason.
Right, and would that, Chair, the county council would report to our schools actually? Councilor Thompson?
Chair, I'm glad that the... The study for the extra 30 schools that we do by September and that even if we push ahead and did something, that would... And one of our schools or one of our schools was selected as part of that 30, that they would still go ahead and do it. I think we should look at this and not put it back. I mean, all stuff in the budget is the winding wheel for the round of...
That's curriculums, Councilor Thompson. That's... That's curriculums in the town.
Yeah, but it's not in... He said it's not in the budget, but it's not... It's not in the budget either. All we're doing is asking for this council to consider and be prepared for in September, we'll find out which schools are going against it in free. It's only going across to the top end of the town. It's not going across the phenomenal amount of people. So, all we're asking is that this council take it on board. And I think the plan, I'm pretty well with everything that Councilor Gellard was saying, until he actually said it wasn't in the budget. The winding wheel's not in the budget. We've committed to spend substantial amount of budget to do an investigation, so I would just like to point out...
Chair, for going back to that, the Council, Thompson, there's like you for the original motion. And the people here have absolutely nothing to do with that. This is a separate capital works programme that is out for consultation and normal space.
Give it away ahead.
Precisely. This is slightly different. And in my motion, I move that it follows confirmation of the additional schools. At that point, and this is... This council should go out and public consultation as well as to whether or not they want us to focus our minds on that.
Do the taxation.
Quite.
Right, Councilor Graham.
Right, Councilor Graham. We did say that the winding wheel wasn't appropriate, but the financial... I would just like to point that out.
Right, okay. So, we have a proposal and a second draft for the... For Councilor Gellard. Motion.
Chair, we have the word on the 587.
Councilor... Councilor Graham.
I do, speaking into the amendment. What hasn't been taken into account here is the model which actually has to come into each individual school. The time to work with the highways staff, the time to work with the police, and indeed, the schools themselves. They have to go up, park, farm, they have to work with children and get involved in that. So, in terms of the fact we've been able to get through the first 33 throughout the year and doing so well, I think this to be applauded. But it isn't just a question of will we screen him to doing that. I think the proposal is in the new motion covers the essential items. We'll put an armature here on for staff that are employed by this authority. It's, I think, one step in the front.
You want your amendment put in, Councilor Graham, or have you changed your mind?
I do agree in principle to the... You know, to all of this. And the only thing is that I would like to have that implemented in 2016, which is... But I haven't drawn objection to boarding on Councilor Gellard's motion. But I don't think that we should talk of implementing in 2016 and not maintain that.
Yes, well, again, in form that... That it's the staff of Durham County Council.
But, you know, there's my... You know, that is my wish, that we should try and implement in 2016.
Okay.
Can I record, Chair, please?
Right, yes. I've recorded the motion. No one's spoke in the motion.
Chair, I'm here to request that we put word on the 578. So, I think...
I think that's excessive, Chair. It was presented to one motion.
Yes, we do, Chair. Exactly. So, after discussion, Mr. Graham. Well, Councilor Thompson?
I have to do the request, so, Chair. I think I've got the amendment, though, not Councilor.
No.
Okay. I'll draw my vote, Chair.
Right, thank you. Now, we get back to the board. Yours, Mr. Graham. Would you believe it, you know? Yours, yes? No? No extensions? Right.
That is a good question, Chair.
Right, thank you. On time, sir.
Spirituality, as I said.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Darks, I don't think that's an important remark.
It's very important.
You know what is an important remark?
You're really common, Chair. Atmoscience versus the city of culture.
The 100,000, 160,000 Councilor Darks has not been approved. They've gone out for a consultation, finished the legislative study, and at the end of the day, the way they're not impressed.
Then another programe?
Yes, thank you. Item 10, thanksgiving and celebrations for the life of Don Robson.
Well, great, Chair. You'd like to say that?
Okay, right. Item 11, chairing skills for elected members. If I can see the rules at the end, it's 27th of May. The letter isn't in the venue or the cost. Councilor Graham.
Yes, Chair. I certainly would be interested in this, but I see that the closing date was Friday, 27th of May. So, I'm wondering whether it's still a project.
Well, I think we do, Chair. We can come back and see if that's a project.
Okay. And you confirm it? And if it isn't, we'll try this between the two. Okay?
Chair, I was just going to remember the contact stays out as they do to similar parts. And I think it's about half a cost actually. But I remember I went on one from this town to the public here, so I think it would be worthwhile saying we'll get the session down here and invite you to the neighborhood to bring members as well.
In the chair, of course. Yes. Okay. Item 12, establishment.
Yeah, through you, Chair. It's just to inform the committee of receipt of the agreements from an employee of the council. Agreements have been received by... Been raised by an employee of the council and hand delivered to the mayor. The mayor has acknowledged receipt of the writing for the agreements. And I'm proposing that I contact the area or request an appropriate independent HR advisor to conduct a correct procedure and deal with it. I've... Members have mentioned, I've copied the agreements, disciplinary agreements arrangements, the documents there for members to see, so...
Okay. The recommendations or recommendations?
Just...
Who's recommendations? Okay. Second, recommendations. Right, Councilor Graham.
Yes, Chair. I think I may reform by district part of agreements from an employee. And it doesn't state whether this is against an officer or a member. And I'm not having read the nautical label topic that this relates to arrangements where it affects officers of the council. And given that matters of this nature are confidential and subject to exposure of present public and also the members' code of conduct. to exclusion of present public, and also the members' code of conduct, code of conduct, and I will defer any discussion on this subject of the now reports to the extraordinary meeting of the council, which is later on in this agenda, where item one, that my motion refers to this case, because, yes, because of the, because of the content in the, in the agreements, it is, you know, because we are the, who's the, thank you.
Item 30, exclusion of present public?
30, of the motion, yeah.